I do.
Okay, we'll go around the room and start with Chris.
Chris Gonbiasky, Huntington Woods, Michigan.
Gail.
Gail Linden, Huntington Woods, Michigan.
Todd?
Todd Spurrell, Huntington Woods, Michigan.
Gordon?
Gordon Linden, Huntington Woods, Michigan.
Rick?
Rick Poland, Huntington Woods.
Jill? Jill Imber?
Sorry, Jill Imber, Huntington Woods.
Blake?
Blake Moore, Huntington Woods.
And Jules, it looks like you joined us. Unmute, mute, sir.
You're gonna have to unmute, Jules.
There we go.
All right, hello, everybody.
So the first thing we're looking for is approval for tonight's agenda.
Mr. Chairman, before the agenda's approved, there's going to be one deletion in the communications under storm watch managed stormwater management ordinance. The proposal changed that has been deleted. It's already been taken care of, and there's no need for action on the part of the planning commission this evening. So other than that, the agenda stands.
We're looking for a motion to approve with the deletion of number eight, item B, correct?
That is correct.
I motion to approve the storm water management ordinance change proposal.
Well. That's, no.
No, you don't.
I don't.
I moved to approve the agenda as proposed with the deletion of the storm water management ordinance change proposal.
Todd, why didn't you help me out with that?
Sink your swim, buddy, sink your swim.
I'll second.
All in favor? Hi.
Do we have a roll call vote, please, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's easier. Okay, we'll go around the room. Chris?
Hi.
Gail?
Hi.
Todd?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
And I am also I.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, sorry, I forgot about that. Next, we are looking for approval of at least two sets of minutes. Am I missing anything else other than the October 26th and November 23rd meetings?
No, you are correct. We finally have our minutes takers getting us caught up, so that's why you have some backdated minutes. She still has one more for the planning commission prior to that that she's working on. We've caught up the zoning board of appeals, and we've caught up the historic district, and she's almost caught up with us. So having said that, those are the two minutes. The November minutes were provided in your packet, and the October minutes were emailed to everybody for their perusal this afternoon.
And are you looking for separate approvals for each or one approval for both?
You're probably best off, if there's any changes, to go one at a time, so the changes will be a record, and she will see this meeting, and that's how she's doing the minutes.
Works for me. All right, we'll start with looking for approval for the October 26, 2020 meetings that were sent via email.
I moved to approve them as written.
For a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Go around the room. Chris?
Hi.
Gail made the motion. Todd?
Hi.
Gordon?
I'm staying.
Rick?
Hi.
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
And Jules is abstaining, looks like it carries.
For the record, the abstentions were because you were not members of the planning commission at the time. Okay, you can vote on it. I just want to make for the record clear that that's why you're abstention.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It wasn't there. And I didn't see the video either, so.
Same thing for November 23, 2020. Do we have a motion to approve as presented?
Before you do that, I wasn't there, but I believe that Jill did not make a motion and second her own motion for the September, October approval of minutes or to defer the minutes. So that's the only mistake that I found, not having been there, but that she didn't. Oh, I take it back, they're two different Jills.
Right.
I stand corrected.
We had multiple Jills.
Okay.
It's less complicated now.
Maybe too many. Now we have to write them out.
Now I see, now I see the last names. I just saw Jill, Jill. Okay.
Okay, so we're talking.
Motion to approve the November 2020 meeting minutes.
Thank you, Rick. Do a second. That was Blake for a second. Chris? Gail made.
Hi.
I'll approve. Hi.
Gordon?
Abstain.
Jill?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Jules?
Abstain.
And I am also I. Good. Okay. Item five, matter of site plan approval for an addition to the Ucat residence at 2583 Wyoming. Who will be presenting tonight?
I'm here for the builder, Home Run Construction.
My question gets on the line as well. I'm not sure what prepared materials you require, though, but my builder and I are happy to answer any questions.
Okay, could the builder, I have him labeled as owner, could you state your name for the record, please?
Name is Vince Gattle. My name, the company is Home Run Construction.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, did you guys want to walk us through it, or did you want Hank to do that?
I'm happy to do it if everybody has a copy. I'm assuming you have copies?
Yep, everybody has a hard copy or a digital copy in front of them, so.
Oh, sure. Okay, well, I guess I'll start with the first page, which I think is the, is it the overhead view of the addition? It shows the layout bird's eye view. And essentially, what currently exists in the home is there's a three season room that was put on sometime after the home was built. And so what we plan on doing is basically just expanding that three season room, so it goes to the back of the home, about three quarters across the back of the home, making it a full bedroom. And then just doing some rearranging of hallways and a smaller proposed study in the existing footprint.
Part of that room is slab, sunroom, and the other part is going to be on the crawl space.
Okay, it looks relatively straightforward. Anything else to add before we hand it over to Hank?
Nope, it's pretty straightforward, I think.
Okay. Hank, anything to add?
Yes, please. Mr. Chairman, if you take a look at the survey where you're showing the addition as being is actually kind of a story that I do want to put on the record. The house faces off of Wyoming, but it's platted off of Vernon. So as a result, this is technically a side yard addition. So it's not in the rear, even though it's in the rear of the house. But having said that, the addition does meet the requirements for side yard setbacks. So there's no variance required there. But I did want to point that out because where you're showing a rear yard, which is at the 20.9 feet, which is at the opposite end of Vernon, 20.9 would be a, because it's connected by a breezeway to the garage, that would be the backyard of the house, which is nonconforming. The structure actually isn't going there, so it doesn't point out, but that's why I highlighted it in your packets, because it's a legal nonconforming situation with the attached garage. So that's it, but the addition is on the side, it meets the setbacks, it meets the height requirements, meets the front yard requirements, does meet the side yard requirements, it meets the lock coverage, it well meets the maximum house size. So other than that, it's compatible with the neighborhood, even after the addition, it's still under the size of the neighboring house. So other than that, if you take a look at the elevations on this, basically you have a change in materials from brick, the house is brick. The addition as proposed is James Hardy siding. And the windows, for clarification, we have new windows to match existing, but it does not say what those windows are. So from, if a contractor can clarify, if those are vinyl, wood with vinyl cladding, wood with aluminum cladding, that would be helpful to us in order for the planning commission to make some changes.
There are special order window, they're going to be, exterior window is going to be brown, dark brown to match the existing windows are in the house, and the interior windows are going to be white, and they're going to be a solid vinyl window, because that way it will match the rest of the house with the vinyl, with the dark brown on the outside and the white on the inside. That's what's in the existing house, but they're going to be vinyl windows.
Okay.
Okay, other than that, Mr. Chair, the only thing that I have is we have, they meet the egress, I mean, not egress, but they meet the penetration requirement, and it does meet the requirements of our code. So with that, that's all I have unless anybody has any questions regarding this project.
Hank, is there a brick ledge?
There is a brick ledge, because the back part of the porch, as the contractor mentioned, part of it's sitting on a slab, so the part where they pour the additional footing will be poured wide enough to accommodate a brick ledge.
Yeah, yes, we're going to have, we're going to continue with like two to three feet of brick around the whole entire addition, and then from that point up, it's going to be Hardy board from that point up. So you're going to have like about two to three feet of brick from the ground up, and then you're going to have Hardy board from that point up.
Mr. Chairman, for the record, could we clarify whether that is two feet or three feet, because we're going to need a dimension on that for the record.
Yep, I think that's fair. Do we have a dimension?
Looks like it's just over two feet is on the existing porch that's there. So that's where we're going to leave it. It's just a hair over two feet.
So to match the line of the existing house.
Yeah, where the porch is now and stuff, there's just about two, just a little over two feet of brick, where, and then the concrete porch starts there. So all we're doing is taking the top edge of that concrete porch off, and then we're going to be starting with the Hardy board there and stuff, and then we're going to continue that brick all the way around the new part of the addition that's going to be going there with the, with the brick all the way wrapping around the house to tie into the other side of the house.
Okay, great. Hank, anything else on this one?
I do not.
Is the house all, is the house all brick?
It is all brick, except for the addition.
Well, the porch that's there now is not all brick. The porch is there, not right now, is aluminum siding that we're going to be tearing down. That's all aluminum siding, the entire.
That's coming off, right?
Yes, that's correct, that is coming off.
And the house then would, the house then would be considered predominantly brick, which is the dominant material of the house.
Yes, except for the gables and stuff, or everything else is brick, and in some parts they have stone on it.
The garage breezeway is a combination, is mostly siding, and then the front of the garage, I think, is a brick, and then the back of the garage is vinyl, I believe.
I think it's aluminum.
Aluminum, I guess.
Aluminum siding on all that.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm good.
Okay, we will go ahead and open it up for public participation. Any members of the public wishing to comment on this, if you could state your name and address? Okay, hearing none, we will close public participation and go around the room. Chris, you are first up.
For voting on approval, questions?
So, sorry, we're just, I probably shouldn't have started with one of the new guys, sorry about that.
Well, you need a motion for?
Well, I was going to ask for comments first, but.
Okay.
Yeah, just if there was anything, anything that anybody wanted to ask specifically, go around the room, and then we'll be looking for a motion. So Chris, anything, any questions initially?
No, no questions for me.
Okay, thanks. Gail?
Is there a reason why you're not going with brick? Right now, it's a screen porch, so there's a reason for it being open. It's quite noticeable as you come down Vernon adjoining the next door neighbor's house that has a garage on that side connected by a breezeway, and I wonder why you're not sticking with the predominant.
The next door neighbor's house is all aluminum siding on the entire side of the house. It's all aluminum siding, the next door neighbor's house. It's all aluminum.
But your house isn't. All I'm saying is.
I mean, I can answer the question for you, Gail, it's just a matter of cost.
Okay.
Let's, yeah, I mean, it's increasingly more expensive to do brick, and I think the way the, the back of the house is set up, it's a unique layout, it's a unique lot, there's in a breezeway that has sort of a siding look to it. That was recently painted, so we went with the Hardy board for one, cost reasons, and for two, it kind of ties in with the, the existing house in the back, if you were to see it from the back.
Thank you.
Gail, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thanks. Todd?
Sorry, I was on mute. Yeah, just one quick question. You piqued my interest when you said the back, so what's the back view? Is the back view that then will be, is it Hardy board now, or is it brick?
Back view of what?
The back view of the house itself, are you talking the back where the porch is now?
Yeah.
The back where the porch is now is aluminum siding with windows in it, that's where the porch is now, with about two feet of brick on the lower part. That's what it is right now.
Yeah, it sounds like this is just a standard sort of 50s three season room hanging off the back, right?
Correct.
Exactly.
Okay. I'm good.
Okay. Gordon?
Good.
All set? Rick?
What's the existing siding material on the front, the front porch and gable end of the garage?
It's got aluminum siding on it, it's the old aluminum siding, large, it's like about eight inches. So this is kind of, kind of look like that, because it's Hardy board, and Hardy board gives you about a seven to eight inch siding look, so it's going to look really close to that, and it's going to be a dark brown, it's a very dark, like cocoa brown look, is what his colors are on the house, so we're going to kind of match that, so it kind of looks similar to that. But this is going to be a Hardy board, and that's aluminum, the old aluminum siding that's on there.
So Hardy board will be painted to match the siding on the front?
Correct, yes, we're going to try and get everything to match the existing house as close as possible.
Okay. All right, that's it, thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Jill?
Yeah, I don't really have any questions. I would have liked to seen like the picture, the rendering of the front to see that porch, because I, you know, at first, I, my initial instinct was that I really wish you had done brick here, but you know, you're saying it matches the front, we just can't see it, so I don't really have any questions, I just wish we could have seen that.
A picture of the original porch? Oh, okay, the original porch has, has windows down to about three feet, and then it just has aluminum siding on it all the way around the entire porch, with like about two and a half feet of brick below that, and it has a cement slab that shows on that. So it always is like a three season room with, with windows all the way around.
Vince, Vince, I think she's talking about the front of the house.
Oh, the very.
It's like a Tudor style home, but it's weird, because it was a custom built home in the 40s. I still have the original plans from the original owners, believe it or not, the blueprint. It was, and so it's essentially, it's essentially a bungalow, because it only has one bend roof on the main floor, but it's designed like a Tudor, so it has really steeped peaks for the roof, and the center entrance is actually surrounded with large stone. And then it has brick, and then what forms the peaks and sort of silhouette or shapes the peaks is the siding that we're referencing. And it's kind of runs through the front of the house, it carries over into the breezeway, and it carries over into elements of the front of garage, and then the back of the entire garage.
Okay. I'm good, Mike.
Thanks, Joe. Blake, you're up.
I think it's consistent, more or less with the, the neighborhood, I think. I like the idea of the dark vinyl windows to match existing. I don't have any great objection to the material change, I think it's a, you know, brick and Hardy board is a smart solution. And I, yeah, I think it'll look good.
This is a picture of the front of the house, if somebody wants to see what it looks like.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Blake, you all set?
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Jules?
Sorry, okay, sorry, I don't, all my questions have been asked and answered, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, it looks like we are looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the plans as presented.
Second. Rick, do we have a second?
Second.
Jules, second, all right, we'll go around the room. Chris?
Approved, hi.
Thank you. Gail?
Hi.
Todd?
Hi.
Gordon?
Hi.
Rick made the motion. Jill?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
I am also I. Looks like it carries. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, item six, matter of site plan approval for addition to Abrams residence at 12959 Talbot Lane. Who will be presenting?
Good evening.
Architect?
Yes.
Great, whenever you're ready.
Hello. My name's Michael J. Gordon. As a personal aside, I just, I'm in October, so I am now a member of the community. I represent Abrams at the home. Actually, she moved there in 2006. Today, we are asking for a design approval of a single story, one room addition to the south.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, somebody's got an open mic, it's real loud, we can barely hear you. Somebody signed in as owner?
That's Vince, I'm trying, trying to get Vince to turn his phone off.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's, sorry, that's, we can, we can hear you, and that's, we just want to make sure.
I took care of it. I took care of it, I muted him.
Oh, good man, Hank.
The purpose of the room is to house a therapeutic spa pool for this Abrams, to use in maintaining her health. She's diagnosed with a couple things, and it was recommended that she do water therapy. She has, and currently, because of some of the issues, she has a broken arm, it will need more therapy. The placement of the room conforms to all building setbacks and codes of the city. The maximum lot coverage is 15%, we are only going to be at 13%. The exterior is detailed to match the existing home, the same brick trim and roofing will be used. Further, the windows on three sides will be similar to the existing windows of the home, which include glass block windows on three sides of the front, rear, and the side. The garage door to the south or rear of the addition is glass, and is necessitated to allow for servicing of the equipment and the eventual removal and replacement of the school, of the spa and pool. The addition sits far back on the site, and will be screened by landscaping provided by Ivan Katz, who's worked on the property these 15 years. Since Talbot Lane is a, is a one way sort of dead end street, the addition will be viewed mostly by the residents of the lane, and has minimal impact on the property. We hope you agree that this is a good solution for the needs of the homeowner, and addresses any concerns that the community might have, and we will be happy to answer questions.
Excellent, thank you so much. Hank, anything to add here?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Basically, this is a very innocuous addition on the side of a house towards the rear of the property, and it's not going to be really very visible from the front or the back. The most visible place would be from the side, and there's substantial vegetation between the two. The height is only one story, so it's under what's allowed there. The front yard is existing, there's no change proposed there. The side yard setback, there is a change, but there's not going to be any problem with that, because it meets all the requirements. The rear yard is still proposed at 80 plus square feet, it's well under the lock coverage, they do have a substantial lot in the acre subdivision, and the maximum house size is well under what is allowed by Wright, including all the bonuses. It is way less in size as a completed project than the neighbor's house, which would be to the east, and the materials meet the requirements. So having said that, this is really, you couldn't put it in any more out of the way place, I guess, is what we're saying with that. If there's any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer, as I'm sure Mr. Gordon is.
Great, thank you. All right, any public participation? Hearing, hearing none, we'll close public participation and go around the room for comments. Chris?
The only, one of the questions I have was the rear elevation, are those windows next to the, the door on the corner there?
Couldn't really hear what he was asking.
Are those on the rear elevation, are those windows next to the door?
That's a, that's a garage door.
Okay, okay.
Like I said, it's necessitate, that end of the tub, the whole panel removed, so when you lift the garage door, you can service it, and in the eventuality that it ever needs to be replaced, then you have the ability to remove it in, in total, because it comes in one big unit, that's this, you know, the size of that footprint.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Gail?
Just a clarification, the stairway is outside or inside?
Inside.
It's inside?
Inside, yes.
Thank you, okay. No other questions?
Thanks, Gail. Todd?
No questions. Pretty straightforward to me.
Thank you. Gordon?
I'm good.
Thank you. Rick?
Oh, one question. I noticed that the addition is setback from the rear, looks like about three foot further back than the previous addition, is there a reason for that?
Yes. The, it's tying into an existing window, which will become a door for the entry, and then the master bedroom proper is, is immediately to the north, so we were trying to minimal impact the daylight and the view from the master bedroom, and we pushed it just slightly to the back, based on all the clearances, and then further, that allows for a small window facing west to capture additional daylight into the space.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks, Rick. Jill?
No questions.
Thank you. Blake?
I have no questions, but I'd like to go on the record and say I'm jealous.
Thank you. Jules?
No questions.
Thank, thank you. I have no questions either, other than when you're ready to sell, I'll take it. Confirm motion?
I'm motion to approve the plans as.
Mr. Chair, did we do public participation on this?
Yes, we did it before we opened comments.
Okay.
Gordon?
Make a motion to approve the site plan as presented.
Thank you. Do a second.
A second.
Jill, for a second, all right, we'll go around. Chris?
Yes, hi.
Gail?
I was a membership.
Todd?
I was also a membership.
Gordon made the motion. Rick?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
I am also I, congratulations, enjoy your pool.
Thank you, very appreciated, thanks.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next matter of discussion is the solar energy report and proposed ordinance environmental committee. Uh, next matter of discussion is the solar energy report and proposed ordinance environmental committee. Uh, this has been kind of an ongoing discussion. So Hank, can you walk us through this?
Actually, I'm gonna let Amy walk you through this unless you want. Amy, do you want me to or do you want to do it? Okay.
Um, we have several, a lot of members of the environmental advisory committee here, they would like to go over the amendments that they've made to the current ordinance. This is, this isn't a zoning ordinance. This is a collaborative process and I'm gonna turn it over to Aaron. To Aaron on? Yes, hi, Aaron. Turn it over to Aaron and he can, um, well, I guess I can walk you through the, uh, the changes here. This should have been sent out in the agenda packet. We did, uh, slightly revised the purpose and intent. We added some definitions. And then for standards for where the solar panels can be placed, right now you'll recall that, uh, they can be placed on the, uh, rear of the home as long as it's not view, viewable from the street. And if there is some compelling reason why it needs to go on the front, it can go on the front, but compelling's not the right word. I don't have the ordinance right in front of me, but, uh, there was no definition of what would be a trigger for front pacing, front-facing panels. So the, uh, environmental advisory committee, after taking a look at ordinances from other cities and some on-model ordinances, are requesting that the ordinance be amended so that front, street-facing solar panels are allowed, just like rear solar panels are. And, um, with some caveats, they can't be too close to the edge, they can't be too high, and then these did not be, uh, these have some sort of coating on it so there's no glare, but to permit front-facing panels, just like rear-facing panels are permitted right now. So, Aaron, did I summarize that accurately based on the last meeting?
Yeah, yeah, I think that's spot on. Thank you.
Okay, great. Um, Hank, anything else to add other than, uh, where we are so far?
Um, I think at this point in time, uh, I don't have anything. I think Amy covered it from an administrative point, but I think that the commission should have their discussion and, uh, public participation if any. Ultimately, correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but you're gonna have to set this for the public hearing for a recommendation of the city commission, correct? This is not noticed as a public hearing, so.
That's right. This is discussion only so there could be some agreement on the ordinance and then once it is, it'll be put into ordinance form and we'll set the public hearing.
Thank you.
And Hank, just to clarify, we'll, we'll do some public participation and, and walk around the room for the planning commission, but are we looking for a motion here?
You're looking at, ultimately at the end of this discussion, you're looking for, should you make changes, whatever those should be incorporated, then you're looking to set a public hearing at the next meeting, to move this forward with the recommendation of the city commission pending the results of the next meeting.
Okay, so not necessarily formal motion, just a
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry, is Mark, Mark Caggerty also here? We had invited somebody. There is, there's
He is here.
Yes, Mark. I'm told, I'm sorry, it's been so long since we last emailed in November. We also have representative from Michigan Solar Solutions, Mark Caggerty is here. So that as this discussion gets into the more technical aspects of solar panels and placement and batteries, et cetera, we have somebody here that has much more knowledge than the rest of us and can address that. So thank you, Mark, for being available tonight.
You're welcome. And besides that, I'll sit here and be quiet unless I'm asked to.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
Okay, so we will first open it up for public participation. Uh, any member of the public wishing to speak?
Hi, this is Bridget McKinley. I'm part of the environmental advisory committee, but also here, um, on behalf of just my neighborhood, myself, my family, and just want to urge passage of this. I'm a big proponent. I'm really excited about the opportunity for us to bring, um, more opportunities for us to consider different ways to power our homes. Um, and to, to bring this to our neighborhood. There's so much research out there that indicates that when you do offer this in the neighborhood, that it actually increases home values. Um, so I'm very excited to hear, um, what everyone else has to say, but just to mention that I am a supporter, opponent. Thank you.
Thanks, Bridget. Uh, Hank, do you need Bridget's address if she is already on the environmental?
We'll, we'll have it.
Okay, perfect. Just wanted to check. Any other, uh, member of the public wishing to speak? Hearing none, we'll close public participation and go around the room with the planning commission. Chris?
No, I'm sorry. No, no, no questions.
Thank you. Gail?
I do. I've read all of the adjoining or literature that Hank gave us regarding the, uh, proposal. And I have a couple of questions, um, that I think need to be addressed or tightened. Installation and maintenance, um, does it have to be done by a licensed contractor? It's electrical. I know that people could get homeowner permits, but I would really be wondering about whether you would let a homeowner do electrical kinds of things and put it up on the roof. So that was one of my questions to be addressed. The other one is the coloring of the panels. Many of the other cities said that they should blend or match in with the roof color so that it is not, um, just, you know, gee, look at that. And then, um, I'm in support of them being on the rear of the property or a, um, structure in the rear of the property. And if it's need be in the front of the property, I wondered whether it should go to the zoning board of appeals for approval to have it done. And then the last thing that isn't addressed in this ordinance is, there's nothing in here that if it's not being used, when it has to be removed. The other ordinances in other cities talked about taking it down within a certain period of time, and this is not addressed. Those panels could stay up indefinitely if they weren't in use. Those are my four points that I, you know, raised on it.
Okay, um, hi, Gail, it's Mary. Um, so I can tell you that in terms of, um, something being installed and if it's going to be installed by the homeowner versus installed by, um, a contractor of some sort that's been licensed, we did not address that, nor was that addressed in the original ordinance for the solar panels. So perhaps that's something that, within public, um, discussion and as you craft what the ordinance will go to the city commission, you can address that. With regard to the color of the panels or how the panels will be, um, addressed at the front of the building, that's really an aesthetic thing. We, as the environmental, um, of advisory committee, we were very much trying to make sure that we could put solar panels on the front of the house when it made sense for the house's, um, orientation to the sun. And we were not hoping or didn't want to get involved with addressing aesthetics, um, for the planning commission because, again, that's kind of your bailiwick and not ours. But we do know that it's possible to acquire, um, solar panel skins that can change the color of the solar panels somewhat. And also, the biggest reason that the front-facing solar panels were not really desirable in the past was that the glare from the solar panels would reach the windows of the homeowners across the street or next door. And there wasn't a remedy for that back in the day, but there is now and we can have non-glare solar panels. So the objection that originally was raised to front-facing solar panels really had more to do with a glare and we can accommodate that, which is why we want to have the ordinance updated to keep up with the technology that's currently available. I know you had maybe one or two more, Gail. I'm sorry, I forgot what you were going, what you said.
For the record, um, I'm sorry, just for the record, um, Mary, you identified yourself as Mary. For the record, can we show that it's Mary Cooper?
Yeah, it's Mary Cooper and I'm on the environmental group, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thanks, Hank.
The last one that I had was if the solar panels are no longer being used and it's been abandoned for usage, what is the policy or how is it put into the ordinance regarding removal? Some cities said within, you know, one year, some said within six months, and ours is mute on the, on the issue.
Again, that is more of an aesthetic thing and you may be better able to, um, craft the language for something like that. Having the experience of putting the ordinances together and what the community as, at large would prefer to have in terms of the general aesthetic of a home and the community. We did not address that because, again, how something looks was not really, um, something the environmental group was in, was concerned about. Does anybody else have, um, something else that they'd like to add to that? In the environmental advisory? And I think I covered it.
Thank you, Mary.
I would just, uh, defer to Mark on this. Yeah.
I'm sorry. Of the statements, there's a couple of things I definitely would like to add to. First of all, solar panels no longer have any glare. Glare has lost power. So the efficiency gains in panels over the last several years has been coatings on the front to decrease glare and to pull the sunlight, uh, through it. In fact, you can look at some of the nation's airports have the largest solar arrays. They had any glare whatsoever, they would not be placed at the airports. So glare is no longer a concern. I don't think I could even buy panels that have glare anymore. Uh, the coloring, uh, panels used to be that blue crystalline look with silver frames and quite frankly, they did not look good. And a lot of them had the diamonds in the center, which were the things that separated the solar cells. But now the architectural panels are a consistent black, non-shiny color and they look good. So it's about all, except when the array is done, we will not know the array is done. The only person that will know that their solar array is not operational is the homeowner. And the array would have to be pulled off when a new roof goes on. So when a new roof goes up, the array would go down and if it's not functioning, I'm sure the homeowner would not pay to have it replaced or put back up. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Did it need an inspection or something annually or just when it goes up?
The inspections are when it goes up and then there'll be an agreement with the utility company. It's an interconnection agreement. And they will have the ability with the bidirectional meters to see if it's producing or not. And if there's any, they will definitely get a red flag. It has to be UL approved for interconnection with the grid because it realistically is a generator that's operating in parallel to the utility grid.
Mr. Chairman, could we get a point of clarification as long as Mark is available to us? So are you, did you just say that black was the only color that was available, so you would not be able to match roofs?
There are still some of the blue crystalline, but their efficiency is, uh, nowhere near what the monocrystalline, which mono meaning one, it's just a consistent black sheen. Uh, so that is the only type of solar panel that really is available for grid tie in the states currently.
Okay, and then so, but you're, just for clarification, like, is there any, like, framing that goes around that? Is that also only available in black?
No, some of those can be the silver, the anodized silver coloring, although the new trend is to get the black on black. They're called the architectural panels. There would, a lot of the neighborhood organizations insist that, uh, customers install, look a lot better.
So they're not available, like, to match a brown roof or a white roof or anything like that? Okay.
White would reflect just by the nature of white, so black would absorb, so it helps with the non-sheen.
Mark, what about, um, these skins that were mentioned? You know, if I have a, if I have a green roof, uh, can I, am I stuck with, um, I stuck with black frames, black faces, no matter what, or can I skin these somehow?
I, in solar electric, it's completely different than solar thermal. Solar thermal being a box or a contraption that would glean the heat from the sun to heat water or air. There may be some type of a skin available in that type of the solar arena. But in solar electric, the market now is controlled by monocrystalline, which is black.
Okay, good to know. Thank you. Gail, you all set?
I'm all set. Thank you very much for clarification, both Mary and Mark.
Thanks, Gail. Todd?
Yeah, the only, uh, Gail hit on a lot of the questions. My only concern is, um, the front side of it is, uh, because I thought, I'm thinking through this, if we had something like this come up, uh, when we were on the zoning board with somebody talking about this, uh, being on the front side. And just so that it, it would come, so that, you know, it would come to the zoning board if you were going to the front side, front side of your house, uh, and be, uh, discussed a little bit further because really the aesthetic side of it, I don't know who said it, but it means like if you're walking down the street and that is the only thing you see from four houses away is, is the solar panels that were just put up. People aren't gonna be happy about that and, um, there should just be some guidance, I, I think, in there somewhere. I, I don't know if you guys, it sounds like, Mary, what you're saying is you didn't think, I mean, you, you were leaving that up to us and/or the zoning board. Is that correct?
Yeah, Todd, because, um, you folks have, through the zoning, um, board as well, the zoning board of appeals and with you folks, you deal with those sort of questions. We're dealing with being able to provide, um, efficient, environmentally sound ways for people to take advantage of the sun and reduce their electrical costs and be a little bit more environmentally, um, I guess, tight in the use of energy. We didn't feel that it was in our purview to start telling you folks what our community would like to see. But one of the things we do know with our community is that the community wants more flexibility and being able to place the solar panels on their home. And the front-facing always had to go to the zoning, zoning board of appeals. It wasn't, you couldn't just decide to do it. Any restrictions that you want to place on the ordinance that would kick a solar panel installation to the zoning port of, board of appeals, particularly on the aesthetic side, we feel that's, that's something you folks know way better than we do.
Okay. Yeah, that's, that's really my only, my only concern. I mean, we, on the zoning board, we, we deal with, uh, it's kind of that, the fencing issue. You, if you give too much direction and, and nail it down into the nth degree for fencing, you're going to pigeonhole everybody and I don't necessarily want to pigeonhole, uh, anybody. But, um, also, we want to have some ability to, uh, have some guidance along, if it's going on to the front. So, I'm done.
Well, you know, um, Todd, I'm sorry, just, just want to say another thing and, um, I can't remember if it was Julie that said it. But one of the things about the solar panel and putting them into a neighborhood is that it does increase the property values to a home. It does show wealth and it shows environmental concern and it, community, people moving into communities like to see that their neighbors are as proactive in, um, dealing things environmentally and it makes the community feel kind of proud of itself. So, since the original objection to the front-facing solar panels were not much of an aesthetic thing, but more of a practical glare, and now that the technology has gotten away from that, the idea of aesthetics, we, I just think that is something you guys know more about because oftentimes those are questions, at least in the zoning board of appeals, it happens. And, um, we didn't want to put those restrictions without knowing what our community likes.
I would just, I would, this is Julie Pedra, and I would like to build on what Mary is saying. And I'm having a little problem with my connection. Are you getting feedback from what I am saying or is it coming out okay?
You're okay.
Okay, so I'll just continue and I'm here to speak on support of the, um, the, the zoning ordinance. And I'm also coming to speak as an owner of a south-side facing house. And I understand people's concerns about the aesthetics, but I am also the owner of a house but I am also the owner of a house that has a deep shaded backyard. So back fronted solar panels would not be a viable option for me. I also would like to say that I do have a roof that is somewhat gray and taupe. And so I do believe that solar panels would actually blend into the rooftop. However, in terms of the issue about aesthetics, I am a little bit concerned because if there was some restrictions, for example, placing a restriction on somebody who would have a red rooftop, who was sitting right next to me in the same circumstances, it would seem to be an unfair limitation to prohibit my neighbor from having the benefit of those solar panels. Well, I could go ahead and reap the environmental values and also perhaps the economic values as well. So you're putting a prior, higher price tag on my neighbor who would, in a sense, have to change the color of that roof in order to take advantage of front facing solar panels. I also would like to say that in terms of the aesthetic, solar panels have become somewhat ubiquitous in that we have become, it becomes somewhat normalized. And while at the beginning, they may, if you start seeing them around in our neighborhood, at a certain point, they become sort of part of the background. For example, like you might see gutters. So in my view, as a member of the EAC and a resident who would like to take advantage of this, I strongly support the zoning ordinance.
Could I chime in again for a moment, please? I want to address three things here. The efficiency, first of all, the southern facing solar panels are the most efficient. So if we use that as a metric, east and west is 80% of south and north could be as low as 20% of south. So it's an economic issue when a customer is not allowed to face it east, west or south, which are the three optimum angles for solar panels. Next, the property value. There are a lot of different studies, the most recent was by the Department of Energy, which state that your property values will increase, but you could look at it yourself. If you're looking for homes and there's two or three that you like, there, you're trying to decide on which one and one doesn't have an electric bill and the other two do, you'd naturally drift towards that one. So you can tell internally that it obviously would raise the property value for most people. The last is the utility value. As a society, we're using more and more electricity and with the electrification of the automobiles going, we're going to start entering more and more brownouts. Solar panels produce the power midday every day when people, our industries and whatnot are using the power and when our utility grid is at the apex of the bell curve. And that's when we're going to start hitting brownouts like we were 10, 15, 20 years ago, when we had rolling brownouts occasionally. And if you have enough solar panels in your neighborhood, your neighborhood may be one of the only ones not going through a brownout at that point. That was it. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay. Where did we leave off here? Gordon?
I love solar power and the potential for it. I think it's a wonderful idea. There is a house on, in Berkeley on the corner of Harvard and Stanford that has a pretty large array on its house. And like every other southern facing house, it's a challenge. And I use it as a landmark when I'm in the area. Look for the house with a big solar array on it. It's a, it's a wonderful idea. The connection details to the shingles are my biggest concern. You're putting all these holes into a roof that really doesn't need it. I would favor something different. It's just like a satellite dish. You don't put it on the roof. You put it somewhere else. You put it on the siding. You put it as a standalone in the yard, the way they're doing with satellite dishes. But these current iterations of the solar power is wonderful for all those who don't face south. Now, we heard about the solar shingles that, that are coming to the market and that's a wonderful idea, but we're still a little bit away from that. What we need to consider the physical work that this is doing. A satellite dish is going to put three additional holes in the roof. A solar array like the one I see in Berkeley has got to have 20, 25 fasteners at least on it. And do they make sure that it's done properly? It should be done with a roofer to be, you know, for it to be done. It needs a building permit. Because homeowners don't know electrical. And it just, it needs to take another step. I don't like the arrays on the roof in any location. But the south facing ones are, are the challenges. That is the big challenge. If I had a south facing house and I wanted it, yeah, that's an issue. Just like it is in that house in Berkeley. So there are, we are moving forward and I, and I, I support this ordinance and everything like that. But there's some practical, common sense things that need to be addressed when we are doing this. Thank you.
Thanks, Gordon.
Could I address that, please?
Sure.
Yeah, Gordon's absolutely correct. A building permit is, it should be required. Some communities do not, but I would highly recommend they do. And one thing that the building department does is require a schematic of where we're going to attach. Because we cannot just attach to a roof, we have to go into a truss or a rafter. And if our lag bolt goes into a truss or a rafter, we do not even penetrate the roofing cavity. So we have been called out numerous times by insurance companies. It's issues that were done by homeowners that didn't quite know the exact steps in installing the solar array in a windstorm educated them real quickly.
Absolutely right, Mark.
Gordon, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Rick?
Hank, what would determine the number and type of inspections for this installation?
Basically, what we're looking at is probably a couple of inspectors that would be involved with this. One would be the building inspector to make sure that the rails are mounted on the roof correctly, because at that point in time, once the rails are on there, the panels just lay in correctly, if I'm wrong, Mark. And then at that point in time, there's an electrical connection too, which would be, which would be the electrical inspector's purview with that. I don't see any other inspector involved with that, but I do see two separate inspections.
Yeah, no other inspection from a city typically, but there's also the utility company which comes out and does their commissioning test. They call it islanding test and they make sure that when the grid fails, the solar array becomes inoperable within a millisecond. So it cannot backfeed and zap an electrician that's working on the line.
Right. That would be done by DT.
Yep, exactly.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a city.
So Hank, what, what would dictate those inspections and then the plan submission for this type of thing? Is that, would that be outlined in the ordinance itself or covered elsewhere?
It would be outlined in the building code and the building officials are allowed by virtue of the Michigan residential code or the Michigan building code to ask for any information that they require in order to make sure that an accessory structure or addition or portion of the house meets their satisfaction, which means that if our building official, Dwayne Franks, wanted to see from Mark, for example, who's doing that, a line drawing as to where these installs were going. Mark would then furnish him with that and then would furnish him with any details, manufacturer specs, recommendations, connection information for the electrical inspector. That would be done at the point of application.
Okay, got it. And then it looks like we're referencing a specific international fire code. Is that the currently adopted code? And is there another way to reword that to just say whatever the current adopted code is?
It is. What the city of Huntington Woods does is we adopt codes by reference. So as the codes change from the International Code Council, and let's say 2012 goes to 2015, goes to 2018, we're adopted by reference because we adopt those specifically. So to, in that, in that fashion, so we adopt the latest as it goes. The only thing that changes is like for historic or something like where the building code is or anything like that. I usually take those to the commission and ask for an adoption for that, but that doesn't go through the planning commission. That goes through the city commission.
Okay. So would we remove then the 2012 and just designate it as the international fire code?
The current international fire code, you could say. Now, the fire code, here's the thing with that too, is we always run through, while we run our electrical codes through our electrical inspector and our mechanical and plumbing codes through our mechanical and plumbing inspector and our building codes through our building inspector. Fire code is handled by our public safety department and they're experts in the fire department. So that's where that code would go for specific.
So that brings me to my next question. It seems like some ordinances require a fire department review of the installation or proposed installation to ensure it's meeting the international fire code and that we're providing access paths for firefighters during ventilation operations. Is that something that we would include as a review to the public safety department before issuing a permit?
That's a good question. What we typically do whenever we get involved in anything like that is we would ask our fire inspector, who's our sergeant, Jason Jordan, what his thoughts were on that. And if he requires or he needs certain things like that, he works with the building inspector as he's done on various other commercial aspects and gets what he needs to put into the plan. And realistically, from Mark's standpoint, if he has to miss like one row of panels and in order to get the whole roof, my guess is he's going to do that. I don't know if he's had experience with that in other cities, but we do show anything where there might be a case or might be something that could be, that could be problematic or quite honestly, something that's new to us. We ask everybody rather than take a chance on not asking enough people.
I would definitely recommend a conversation with the fire marshal or sergeant for public safety, whoever the individual is and ask how to ventilate a roof. Do they do the gable vent or do they actually do a roof vent? Fire departments are merging more towards gable venting since the leading fatality and firefighters fighting residential structures is falling through a roof and venting through a gable is just as efficient. Many are switching to that, which would negate that code.
I think a lot of that too depends on whether the gable end is brick or if it's a sided gable end. So I know that, I know that on some brick houses where we've had fires that they've gone right through the roof and they'll, they'll get, if they have a spot they need to get to, they'll get to it. So.
Mark, I, I am a firefighter in the city. We do ventilate roofs still. It's not common practice, but we'll do it still.
And also, if you're up for it, I'd like to have a sidebar conversation with you about fighting fires on older type solar arrays, because there's a lot of these solar arrays that are out now that when you disconnect power to the home, the voltage actually goes up on the array and you have a false sense of security up there with water and an ax.
Got it. Okay. It'd be a good conversation to have, but anyways, Hank, what I would suggest is that this passes through the public safety department and have the public safety department decide if they want to review plans prior to a permit being issued.
Well, we'll do that. I mean, from what I'm hearing from people here, that there may want to be a few changes or alterations to this. So once we get a final incarnation prior to us bringing it to the next meeting for that I would forward it to the public safety department, the individuals that would be in charge of that for their comments. And then that, those comments would also be available with the, any, with the revised ordinance if need be to the planning commission prior to the hearing that you would propose.
Got it. Okay. That's all my comments.
Thanks, Rick. Jill?
You know, I don't really have additional questions. I guess I just feel like as far as I understand, like the aesthetic component, you know, is, is more in our wheelhouse, but I just feel like some of it needs to be addressed in the ordinance, like as far as like front facing, rear facing, like when it would be appropriate to be front facing, or I just don't think it's clear enough in the language as proposed, but I'm all in favor of doing it. I just think we have to be a little more specific.
Thanks, Jill. Blake?
Well, I first want to thank EAC for patiently coming back to these meetings and having prepared a lot of this information. I keep coming back and I think I said this at one of the other meetings, but I keep coming back to this notion. Whether it's been stated or it's been sort of implied that solar is unsightly is something that I feel like I hear, maybe not in this meeting, but in a general sense. And I just want to kind of address that for a moment because we are talking about aesthetics, but we are also talking about, I mean, it's, it's not even fair to call it an emerging technology at this point, but for the sake of argument, an emerging technology, you know, reshapes, emerging technology or cultural change reshape aesthetics. And I think we're kind of hitting that critical mass in terms of practical necessity. You know, this is a fairly seamless passive energy collection system that needs to be addressed clearly. And, you know, in previous years, I mean, I would say a gas meter is unsightly. I would say that water meters are unsightly, fences in many cases. A dish or an antenna, you know, stainless steel kitchens 10 years ago, 20 years ago would have been considered unsightly. So I, I caution us to keep an open mind when we talk about, you know, aesthetics and we think about the practicality of that aesthetic. Now that said, at the same time, I think everyone's points are very valid. I think, you know, having an electric, a building inspector, an electrical inspector, permits required, that just makes good practical sense to me. But at the same time, we have to look at the other side, I think, to, to to Jill's point, that, you know, there, there needs to be some tighter language, like, let's say, for example, and I don't, I think maybe it was Julie who said, I have a very shaded backyard. I mean, and so this came up in another meeting too, but the notion that maybe a homeowner falls into that, you know, I want to have solar panels now because it's cool. The ubiquitous solar panel in Huntington Woods, I'm going to take out all of my tree coverage. You know, so we do have to sort of look at restriction and, you know, what is a solar viable situation, but if, if there's, if I'm going to put a bow on this, it's, I think it's important that we keep an open mind when it comes to aesthetics, because that aesthetic does change as the culture changes. So that's it.
Thanks, Blake. Jules?
Well, Gail and Gordon and everybody have asked the salient questions. Mark, I have a question for you. What can you tell us about the impact of solar panels on a homeowner's, the cost of homeowner's insurance? Is it pot, is it, does it cause rates to increase, decrease or no effect?
Well, like Blake just mentioned, things change and they change radically. We've been doing this over 13 years and one of our original customers, the insurance company canceled them because they thought they were a utility company. Now it's to the point where the last few years, we've said to customers that it typically does not move the needle of your insurance costs. And here's why. Typically, insurance companies are worried about kid next door neighbor throwing a rock or, or maybe hail. What's the cost to replace one panel? The cost to replace one panel we put in our closeout documents is around $450. Well, if it's 450, it's less than your deductible. So we have not had a customer in the last few years have told us that their insurance has gone up when 13 years ago, people were getting canceled. So to Blake's point, things change and they change radically.
Um, I thinking as speaking as from the trying to anticipate what you might hear at the city commission, I can, I can tell you that the aesthetic issue is, is not minor. It will be a major, major issue. And I don't think Hank, houses in the city currently have these?
There's, there's, I'm not aware that there's any new installations at all in the city. So I don't know that people are knocking the door down for this, but then again, I don't know that they won't be.
How many houses have it now?
If there is, there's a small handful, I don't think there's a half a dozen if that.
All right, well, I don't, and I'm certainly not, I certainly concur about how aesthetics can change what somebody may consider a few years ago to be horrific. Now they're paying extra to get it and I understand that. But I don't, I mean, I, you know, before, and this is my 12th year on the city commission, I served on planning and ZBA. And so I'm, you know, sensitive to these issues. I mean, how it looks, whether it seems shallow in some regards is very important to the neighborhood and to the city and to the value of the homes and the whole entity we call Huntington Woods. Nobody should just say, well, that doesn't matter because it does matter and it will matter. I'm not, I'm not suggesting to you that it's, I'm in agreement on your point that it can change. But don't, don't believe for a second that the aesthetic component is not extremely important. I concur completely in what Mike and Gordon said about the need for a permit. Absolutely. I cannot envision this ever becoming an ordinance without very strict enforcement provisions with regard to having to get a permit and having to have an inspection. Absolutely. There's a lot of stuff going on here between structural and electrical. So, but like I, and oh, I have one other question for Mike. What's the life expectancy for one of these panels?
The expectancy is about 35 years. They're warranted for 25 years. And we have sold a company called Solar World Panels, which used to have an advertisement that stated basically they have panels that are 42 years old and still working within factory specifications. It's the strong part of the component list, if you will, the inverter, electrical box is the weak link. That will last about 12 to 15 years. But there are four rules of thumb that we use when going to a neighborhood organization, which are typically the most stringent for aesthetics. And if the ordinance followed, I could put a solar array up on a home that would comply with this and look good, or I could put the same array up in a different fashion that doesn't comply with it and it's an eyesore. And basically it's, they don't stick over the peak, the rake edge or the gutter. They fall within the frame of the roof. Next being, we do not deviate from the roof pitch. We parallel the roof. We don't hike up the rear panels to have a better angle to the sun. The third being that they're continuous without subrays. We don't put one panel to the right of the plumbing vent and then four panels to the left of it and so on, and end up with a bunch of subrays that looks like a cluster. Then lastly, that the panels are the black on black without grid lines. And it looks really good when those four oh, design attributes are upheld.
Do these panels add to or diminish the life of the roof? I mean, we frequently hear about a roof being described as a 15 year project or whatever that the, that the average roof in Michigan, just because of the cold and the heat and so forth. What is the impact of solar panels on the life of the underlying roof?
Sure, it increases the lifespan. And here's two reasons why. The first that people typically think of is that it is blocking the sun from hitting the roof. If you look at a roof that's, let's say 20 years old and the shingles, they're facing south, they're drying up and they're curling and the north side still looks okay. Maybe a little bit of moss on it. Well, it blocks the sun from hitting it. But here's something that actually is a much bigger impact. When the snow hits the roof in the evening and let's say it melts and the water gets into the aggregate. And then in the middle of the night, it refreezes and it pulls the aggregate up. And then in the next day, the aggregate runs down into your gutter. If you look at your south facing roof compared to your north facing roof and you look at the gutters on both, the southern facing gutter will always have more aggregate than the north.
I can, I can buy that.
Jules, anything else to add?
No, thank you.
Okay, thanks. I feel like we've beat this horse to death, so I'll keep it a little bit short. You know, I, I think this is a great concept. We just need to sort out the aesthetic piece of it. You know, just to piggyback on what Mark just mentioned, you know, the installation of these that he mentioned under the ridge, over the gutter, on the roof panel, that's, that's kind of the bare minimum to me. My concern, I think in the language of this specifically, it doesn't read like we talked about in last meeting or the initial meeting. If you look at standard four, frames shall be the same color as the collector's surface. We talked about it being the same color as the roof. Now, it sounds like we have some new information from Mark as of today that that may not be possible. But the reality is, if you have a light tan roof and you stick a black glareless panel on it, people are going to have an issue with that. So, you know, if that means if you want solar power, you get a black roof, maybe that's the answer. I don't know that that's a great answer, but the reality is, I agree with Mary that this is going to become a standard at some point, but we're a long way from that. Reality is solar is a rich person's game at this point. This is not an affordable technology yet. So I think we'll get there. I hope we get there, but the aesthetics are a thing that we need to address right now. So that said, you know, back to I guess the original conversation on how this kicked off, the language that is in the packet for today. The, the color, I think is an issue. Most roofs are dark, not all of them are though. So if you checkerboard one up with solar panels, we're going to make some angry neighbors here. So Hank, I guess that said, and listening to what everybody has said, what do you recommend as kind of next steps here?
Well, there's going to need to be some guidance from the planning commission as to what to come back with for an ordinance. As I'm understanding this, and if anybody has anything else to add in, please feel free. The concerns go to, if we just like run down the list for this here, and let me get right to start on this in the standards. Where it says one, solar energy devices are permitted in all zoning districts. That would be fine because there's also something in here that says that the historic district is a separate entity and they do their own. So that would be okay as long as it doesn't encompass the historic district. Solar energy devices shall be permitted on principal and accessory buildings in accordance with applicable zoning regulations. That's the same. And I don't see that anybody really had a problem with that. Is that correct? Okay, roof mounted solar energy devices shall not project vertically above the peak of the roof to which it's attached or project vertically more than three feet above a flat roof installation. We had talked about that last time. So unless somebody has something new to add to that, I think that language was okay.
Hank, can you clarify that? You said three feet above a flat roof?
Yeah, like for example, if they're on a commercial building and it's a flat roof installation, that it's three feet above it would be the maximum height. Perhaps Mark can lend some expertise as to whether or not it's that, it has to be that tall. I know that at the bank, when they did it, they didn't put it anywhere near that.
Okay, no, no need for clarification, Mark. I understand it.
Okay. So then four, frames shall be the same color as the collector's surface. All panels shall have an anti-reflective coating. I think everybody was fine with the anti-reflective coating. The question came up with the frames shall be the same color as the collector's surface. Meaning as I'm reading that, that the frames are black, the collector's surface would be black. What we're not getting that we talked about last time was is that if they're available, if it's a red roof, they're red. If it's a blue roof, they're blue. If it's a green roof, they're green. So they're going to be black no matter what. So if that's a point of contention, there should be some language forthcoming to either allay that or address that. Because as it stands right now, there's a mixed read on the commission for that.
You know, to me, that was when we first started this conversation, that seemed to be a pretty high point of the color match to some degree to the roof. So I think that's going to be a sticking point. And if what Mark is saying is accurate, and I don't know why it wouldn't be, if you can only get these things in black, that very well may need to mean, lead to us saying you have to have a black roof or, and if you don't, you got to change it.
There's also another option for that too, and it was discussed briefly tonight in that if it's a front facing, if it's a front facing roof, then they would have to demonstrate a practical difficulty and hardship. And perhaps you send them to the zoning board of appeals. The, Mary had indicated that she was fine with that. And if that's the case, maybe it is. But if they demonstrate a practical hardship when the bulk of their roof faces south and that's the place to get it, and they've got two huge oak trees on the side and that is the only place that they can get solar, perhaps they go to the zoning board of appeals, perhaps they plead their case. And perhaps the zoning board of appeals says, yes, we understand your plight. So that's one option for you to consider with that. Now with the information that they just have the black on black. So that's the one thing. And then if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to come back to that so we can just go through the rest just to make sure that we're all on the same page with this. Cause we're going to have to retype this. Five, setback from roof edges is defined by the international fire code or any code that adopted thereafter, which pretty much covers kind of what Rick was looking for. But again, we will be running this past public safety. So the firefighters may access the roof in a quick and safe manner and may penetrate the roof to create ventilation if necessary. That will be taken into consideration and you will have an answer for whether or not that would meet that or public safety would address that.
Hanky? Did you want to take out, you said international fire code. You took out the 212, 2012. Did you want to insert current?
Well, it says, or any code adopted thereafter. And if ours are adopted by reference, that would automatically do that. But what I will check is to make sure that that's how that process works for the fire code, because I'm not sure. I know how it works for our, for the codes that I deal with. We'll check that out. Then it says ground mounted solar energy devices shall be prohibited. I don't think anybody really hit a problem with that one. And then seven, facade mounted solar, which that we need to the L, energy devices shall be prohibited. That means like on your walls, so nothing is hanging off your walls. So, and that's what's being proposed. I don't think anybody really hit a problem with that. Solar energy device, I'm sorry.
You're not going to allow it on the side of the house? You're not going to allow it on a standalone?
That is, that is, that is correct. But they're allowing it on accessory structures. So meaning that you could also put it all over your garage room if you want. The garages are in the back, so you pick up that space.
I can't put it on my chimney.
Well, no, but the difference is, is that once you put it on the ground, Gordon, it becomes an accessory structure. And you're only allowed two accessory structures. So you're allowed one garage and one accessory structure and a 10 by 10 or 100 square feet. So if you wanted to take your 100 square feet and use it for solar panels, I guess an argument could be made for that for interpretation of the zoning board of appeals. But as it stands now, they're not proposing that.
Okay, well, I'm not going there, but.
Okay, but I just, we're just going, then again, eight, which says solar energy devices in historic districts are subject to historic district permission review. That has to be, that's a state law. Nine, solar storage batteries. And again here, Mark, perhaps you can weigh in on this for us. I assume you've seen our ordinance proposal here, Mark. Solar batteries or solar storage batteries. When solar storage batteries are included as part of the solar energy system, they must be placed in secure containers or enclosed when in use. And when no longer used, will be disposed of in accordance with applicable laws and regulations. There's no reason that that's not a fair statement, I trust, Mark?
No reason at all. They all come that way now that they're switching over to the lithium ion.
Perfect, thank you. And then for 10, installation and maintenance. Solar energy systems shall be installed, maintained and used only in accordance with manufacturer specifications. The installation manuals and specifications must be submitted with the permit application. And we did talk about that. The installation of solar energy systems shall comply with the building code, the electrical code and any other applicable federal, state and local codes and all requirements of the federal aviation administration, which I'm assuming is your glaring issue, Mark, with the planes and then everything like that. Installation of a solar energy system shall not commence until all necessary permits have been issued. Building rails must be inspected before panels are installed. And again, we did talk about that, Mark, where the building official gets to see it before you lay the panels in on it. And that would be where they would see any wires, any, you know, and that you're actually going into a truss or a rafter. So did you have any questions or problems with that, Mark?
That would just deviate from any other city I've seen. Typically, the building official would get into the attic and look to see if there's any their three and a half inch lag bolts typically. And if you miss a truss, it's glaring.
Well, but right, but that's just stating that that's what he's inspecting. He's inspecting the rail installation before the panels are installed. So whether he crawls into the attic or looks at it from the top, he's going to get a better view inside the attic than he ever would from the top.
Yeah, it's just, most of these systems are a one day install. And if it requires a rough inspection, if you will, then it becomes a two day install, increasing substantially the cost to the homeowner.
I can't speak to that only because I would ask, I would defer to the building official as to what he wants to see. And if he wants to see it, because that's the same thing as realistically, when we put a roof on, we require an open roof inspection. So I don't know that this is really any different than that, but that would be something that I would see. In some cases, the building official will allow photographs. And realistically, if he does a final on that, he can still go in the attic and see if you've missed anything. So that's not going to change.
Little bit of added information, the panels themselves with the rails and whatnot sit about three and a half to four and a half inches above the roof deck. So a building official can see by looking under the panels, a significant portion of the array, and they could gauge whether they've been installed pursuant to the panel, pursuant to the plans just by doing that.
Okay, I'm, what my intent would be with this is that when we get to a final incarnation of this is to absolutely allow the electrical inspector to take a look at it and see if there's any input, the building official to take a look at it, and also our fire inspector to take a look at it. Other than that, as far as it going into the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance comprises of whatever you folks say it is. So with that under consideration, I just want to make sure that what we're coming back to you with, if a motion would be forthcoming to set the public hearing for next month, that we have the correct language for you. So in item number four, which is what we go back to, unless anybody has anything to say about any of the other standards, we go back to item four, which is the same color as the collector's service. So I surface, so I'm not sure where you want to go with that.
Are we going to say, thank you. Are we going to say licensed contractor in number 10? And not allow a homeowner installation for the electrical?
I think we're going to, what I was going to do is you can put whatever, if you want that language in there, but I would also ask the electrical inspector, because typically, a homeowner's typically, they'll change a plug, they'll change a switch, but I don't see many homeowners delving into the panel. But that doesn't mean they can't.
But you can pull a homeowner permit for anything else. I don't know why we would stop it from this, right? I mean, you don't, we don't have to have a licensed contractor for anything else. We do.
Well, the thing with the homeowner's permits are is that the homeowner that pulls a homeowner's permit is expected to actually do the work themselves. So for somebody pulling a homeowner's permit to do that and then hire an electrician would not be according to HOIL. There should be no reason that a licensed electrical contractor, plumbing contractor, HVAC contractor, or licensed builder would not want to pull a permit. There's no cost difference and no cost savings between a homeowner pulling the permit or a contractor pulling a permit. The cost is the same. The difference is, is that when they pull a homeowner permit, the homeowner's responsible for the work. When they pull, a contractor pulls a permit and they're a licensed contractor, the licensed contractor is responsible for the permit. And the city of Huntington Woods then becomes an advocate for the resident. Should there be any problems with the contractor, the city then has some recourse.
Yeah, I guess I just don't know what the benefit would be to make this a licensed contractor mandate.
I would defer to whatever the, what the building official or electrical inspector says. I'm not going to speak for them. I feel like they should, they'll have very definite feelings about whether they want an electrical contractor to do it. And perhaps Mark can weigh in as to what they do in other cities. They'll have very definite feelings about whether they want an electrical contractor to do it, and perhaps Mark can weigh in as to what they do in other cities.
Well, I do know that we used to offer homeowners parts and smarts packages, but it ended up being an issue. So we discontinued that. We don't support it. But I don't see anything we can do to stop it. There's all kinds of companies online that they can go on and order it via the internet and have it delivered on a truck.
So I I guess if it's the pleasure of the planning commission, what I would do is I would come back to you with some information at the next meeting. And just because you're going to public hearing doesn't mean you can't change exactly what it says. You can add something like that if it's if if I get strong feedback from the inspectors that say, no, we want to have it a licensed contractor. That information will come to you. You could add it in. You can change it at the meeting.
Yeah, I guess I'm less worried about that than I am the, what is that bullet point? Four about the color of the roof. I mean, that that seems to be the real sticking point here.
That I don't have an answer for you. If it's only available in black, the only the only answer to that would be is that you want to send the people that have it on the front of the house, you could send them to the zoning board of appeals and let them prove that they have a practical difficulty or hardship. And they could demonstrate that. If they could demonstrate that, then that's where it goes.
You know, maybe maybe that's the answer. You you've got a black roof. You want to put these on. It fits the ordinance. It's not an issue. And if you've got a tan roof and you don't want switch your roof to black, then you fight it with the ZBA. Maybe that's the best thing to do.
It also may be expedient for them. So that's an option. I- i- if if, as we know, now, again, like, you know, Mark says, and like Blake says, the technology evolves on a very, very, very quick basis. But the colors that are still going to absorb the most are always going to be the dark colors. It's like Mark said, the reflective colors don't help them. So the dark colors are what they're going to look for. So they're always going to be in the dark family. So whether or not we would see a red, whether or not we would see a white or anything like that is highly unlikely. So, you know, again, if solar energy comes before us, and we've had one, one go to the zoning board of appeals that I recall in the last fifteen years. So having said that, that may be an avenue that would give people an opportunity to still have their solar power and still comply with the ordinance, because if the zoning board of appeals recognizes there's a practical difficulty or hardship, and they're gaining something that not everybody else can have, or that there's a appreciable difference in power loss, then the zoning board of appeals would have the power to grant that, and that may take care of the color issue and problem with that. So having said that, I see Aaron has his hand up. So Mike, that's up to you.
I was just going to say, as fast as this technology is evolving, I wonder if five years from now, solar panels are going to be gone, and you know, the the more of like a Tesla roof style is going to be the.
That that may be. It's all fairly pricey these days.
So I'm sorry, who who wanted to comment?
Aaron had his hand up, and I believe he wanted to comment.
Oh, hey. I mean, was that's the way it's going to be in five years is we are going to have those solar powered shingles.
Yeah.
Actually, before I speak, Mark, can you address that? The Tesla innovations and panels and the shingles?
Sure. We used to have in Auburn Hills, a company called Unisolar, and they had a thin film roof product. And they ended up going out of business. They had a thin film product, it was called. And then Dow in Midland came up with one in joint combination with CertainTeed shingles. And we installed several of those. They ended up going out of business. While I do believe that it eventually is going to head in that direction, and it's probably going to be Tesla that drives it, they've had a lot of issues meeting demand. It's going back to the colored solar panels for a second. You go and Google on the internet, and you're going to find companies that say they have colored panels, but try to buy one. Try to buy one. It seems like everybody offers something, but none of it is truly available to the market. And that's where we're at right now with the shingles.
Thanks. I guess I would. First of all, thank you, everyone, for this conversation. I really appreciate it. As a member of the EAC, I you know, I worry that Huntington Woods is a few years behind our neighbors. Pleasant Ridge has already done this three years ago. They made solar panels by right on both the front and the back. Pleasant Ridge has not collapsed. Their property values have gone up. And unlike us, they've actually had solar panels added to homes. So I think this is. So I want to talk about the aesthetics, but kind of the larger point is that this is a symbolic act. And maybe that's not something that planning can can think about, but something that the city commission needs to think about. That Huntington Woods should be at the forefront of energy efficiency, and we're not. We are getting schooled by Pleasant Ridge and by Berkeley, and that's embarrassing. There is no reason why we shouldn't have an ordinance that actually encourages our homeowners to have solar panels. That kind of gets to that. So that's kind of my larger appeal to your soul. And, you know, I hope you think about it for the for you for the the neighborhood. You know, I see solar panels like steel roofs that you might notice when at the beginning, but solar panels, as as many of my fellow EAC members have said, proliferate, because once one homeowner gets it, someone else is going to get it. So I would urge the committee actually to leave out the point about aesthetics and bring it to public hearing. And if our neighbors actually make a row about it, then put it in. You have a certain viewpoint in that you are always thinking about every brick and every window, and I appreciate that. Neighbors, though, are going to think, I think, a little bit differently about their neighborhood and holistically. If they actually do make a stink, then put it in there as something about inconspicuity, you know, something about colors. But if you're putting in more prohibitions or more regulations, you're just going to breed regulations. Let the neighbor speak about that. That's it.
Mike, perhaps this would be a good opportunity to go around for the planning commission and see what they might have comments. I noticed.
I I totally agree with Aaron. My concern there is, you know, we put these things out for public hearings. You know, we get, unless it's about the zoo tigers, we get five people that show up. I would love to have a a citywide survey and and get participation, but easier said than done.
I'll actually, sorry to interrupt. I will add that that's exactly what Pleasant Ridge did, was they did a survey, and they found overwhelming support. So that might be a way to do this.
Okay. All right. Well, yeah, Hank, I think that's probably a good idea. Maybe maybe go around the room and and decide if this is ready to go to public hearing, or maybe even investigate something on a larger scale, survey wise. We'll start with Gail.
I think a survey is a good idea. And see what they have to say before we put together something for a city hearing. I asked that the new or reinstated Communication Committee and the billboards and the website be a better avenue of getting this information to the residents to let them know that there's something that they're might want to voice an opinion about or listen to so that they know what is. Otherwise, they typically just don't turn in, you know, come to a planning commission meeting. You know, it used to be different when we would have a city hall, a city meeting, and it was at the rec center or it was at the, you know, city hall, so people could come and really say something. So I think that we have to communicate that well to everybody when we do have the city hearing on it.
Thanks, Gail. Yeah, I guess, Hank, I should have probably, before I threw that out there, is is something like a survey, Survey Monkey kind of thing, is that even a viable option? Or maybe that's a question for Amy before I throw that carrot out there?
It's it's actually, it's it's all a viable option. The thing is, is that whatever you direct us to do, that's within reason, we're certainly going to do. The issue that becomes with that is is that you still have the same problem, and that you have to get the word out that there's even a survey monkey. So that would be something that we would have to, i- i- if that being the case, it's nothing that would go back to the planning commission for a public hearing quickly. Because that would have to be thought out, and the process would have to be derived in order to make that viable. Otherwise, if we just say we're going to have a survey on Survey Monkey, we have to find a way in order to get it to the residents in order to get a vote.
I mean, is is a email blast that we, out of our existing?
Amy's done, Amy's done a really good job of cultivating the email blast. But having said that, I believe that we get, and correct me if I'm wrong, Amy, but I think we have like approximately fifteen hundred people on the email blast, and we have over six thousand residents. So I don't, I think that that's certainly a tool, and it's been fabulous at that. There are different types of communication methods that we could probably use for that. But again, there are logistics that go into it, like how many times do you want each house to be able to vote? How many times? So i- it's not something that's easily done without thought. And I think that's that's something that I would say that we might want to think about. I think the questions are obvious, but we would come back to the planning commission to make sure that the questions, or I would think we would come back to the planning commission, make sure the questions are fair and equitable.
Okay. All right, Gordon.
Trees, that's it.
Rick.
So I don't think we had a consensus on the licensed installer. I I just want to say that, you know, homeowners should have the right to perform the work themselves, just like any other. It would be subject to inspections by the city. So the homeowners should maintain that right, and I don't think we should dictate that in this ordinance. And then, you know, I think if we integrate the comments that Mark had in terms of aesthetics, I personally would be okay sending this forward for a public hearing.
Okay, thanks, Rick. Blake.
I agree. I'm mad. I'm a little surprised we didn't think of some sort of a meaningful citywide survey scenario a while back, but I'm not persuaded that we're going to get a lot of, to Hank's point, that we're going to get a lot of participation. But I do think it's worthwhile to open it up, and I'm I'm sort of torn between what I hear and what Aaron's suggesting, that we just kind of we do put it in the hands of the people. I mean, we will, we will hear the gamut. But I do think it's worth some sort of a meaningful kind of community input before we try to put this thing down on paper.
Thanks, Blake. Jules.
Yeah, I don't see the harm in in the in the survey, but remember survey people with answers, the response, our contingent upon what information they have and what they understand, because if if you just say to somebody you favor solar panels, that that you all know the current in me, not in my neighborhood, you know, not in my backyard. So I think I think a craft survey is probably a good idea. And I think that would probably help going forward with regard to not only a public hearing, but the city commission.
Thanks. Chris.
Yeah, I I agree. I think we should get some type of participation, some level. And I agree with Jules, you know, just some definitions, examples, so to speak, as well, to get their input and and get some basic level of understanding as well. And and I agree with Rick, you know, with the if a homeowner does want to take on that, that project, they should be allowed, just like any other project as well.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Todd.
Well, I definitely don't agree with Jules. I was kidding. I was just trying to wake him up.
Anything, though.
I exactly. No, I'm the I'm the new guy coming in. So one of the things, you know, I listened to you guys have done a lot of great work, obviously, to get to this point. Mary's and Aaron's and Julie's passion. You, you know, I get it. I wanted to tell Julie, but I I knew I I knew I wouldn't survive it, but I'm going to say it anyways. Just cut those trees down and put it up in your backyard. Who cares? See, now look at I got Blake's attention. But what what the idea of when Mark said at the very end, you know, Pleasant Ridge has already got this. Berkeley's been doing it. We haven't. If there's nothing that gets Huntington Woods residents fired up, is lagging behind our neighbors. I would have led with that in this conversation. Now, you guys probably had already talked about that in the previous meetings coming here, and me being the new guy, I I was clueless on that. I think stuff like that is very important to educate our public and our residents. And so I think things like that could be done in a in a quick survey to get the feedback. And so then also to be prepared when it does come to public discussion, because Jules is right. Not, you know, go ahead and do it, but don't do it in my backyard is what a lot of our parent or residents may say. You know, it's so as we go through this, but the more we know what the residents are going to think and say, the better prepared the commission and others will be to be able to have a rebuttal. Right? And yep, that was it. Those are my, those are my thoughts as I put them down.
Thanks, Todd. Jill.
Yeah, I really like the survey idea. I think so much of what we're talking about here is is kind of anticipating what the neighbors, you know, the neighborhood really think about this, and I think we got to get our hands around that. I think we got to be kind of careful about the survey itself and what we're asking and and be prepared, you know, to deal with the responses and kind of craft the ordinance in a way that responds to to the concerns of the neighbors. So I like the idea. I don't know who drafts the survey and whether or not it makes sense for the planning commission to take a look at it before it goes out. But I I think it's a good idea. And as far as like reaching, I don't know. I hear your concern, Hank, about reaching everybody on on these surveys, and I don't know how we do that if we only have fifteen hundred emails in the database.
I I think that there's a couple of things to answer what you brought up, and they're they're good points. One is you can reach people, even if you mail it to everybody's house, there's no saying that everybody's going to turn one in. So if you did it that way, or even if you did it with Survey Monkey, most of the people in here are going to be tech savvy enough to hit a Survey Monkey. The question is whether they read what you mail them to let them know to go to the Survey Monkey. So that's the one thing. The second thing is is that we, with regard to the language of the survey questions, surveys are typically very, very difficult in that you can craft questions to lead people to an answer, or you can craft questions to solicit a non prejudicial response. And with that suggestion in mind, and the concern that both I and Jill kind of echoed with that, I think it would be important that the planning commission see the questions before they go out onto the survey, because after all, those questions have to make, the 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 questions are going to have to satisfy you before they can satisfy the city commission. So as a result, I think that the questions in a survey, if that's what the planning commission decides needs to be done, that we should go ahead and do that, and then bring the questions back. And again, nobody's going to answer a forty question survey, but they'll answer ten. So that's kind of the thought process with that. So whatever the pleasure of the commission is, that's what we ought to do.
I'd be happy to share the survey Pleasant Ridge, which I think was no more than two questions.
That'd be helpful.
Yeah, and I'm and I'm not saying the two questions are going to be, because if the questions are, do you want solar or you don't want solar? Then the question becomes, have you educated them enough as to the possible ramifications or the possible benefits? So I think that there has to be some information, or there has to be some kind of dissemination of information in the survey. And I'm not sure exactly how you do that, but I still think that whatever we come back with before it's sent to the public to actually ask for their input and vote on, should be looked at by the planning commission and the Environmental Advisory Committee, too. I mean, this is a joint effort, and I think that everybody should be included with it. That's just my two cents. And if to the extent that I could facilitate that, I'm happy to do that. And if, to the extent that I could facilitate that, I'm happy to do that.
Yeah, I, I think trying to get as much public input as we can makes sense. You know, I'd be interested to hear more about Pleasant Ridge. You know, there, I don't doubt that there, it sounds like they're more progressive than we are on this specific issue. But I also find it hard to believe that they can just willy nilly throw solar panels wherever they want. So I'd like to find out what that actually looks like. One of the, one of the first things we talked about when we started this conversation was, we didn't want a solar panel on a stick in the front yard, like you see a satellite dish up north. So, you know, I, obviously Pleasant Ridge probably doesn't allow that. But there's got to be a happy medium. So I feel like I just created a lot of work for Hank and/or Amy or whoever else for, for this survey. But I think that's probably the best thing to do is, is try by some method to get some more public opinion and then have an actual public hearing and move forward. Okay, okay.
Sorry, if I, if I, Mike, if I'm Ben Phelan here, hi. I'm grateful, as always, for everyone's time in doing this. It's, I think I referenced Groundhog Day last time. There's, there's getting to be a little bit of like a Sisyphus effect, I think, where we're all considering this carefully and framing our thoughts and like the boulder rolls back down the hill. I guess, I, I don't understand why the public hearing couldn't be the way to get public inputs. I mean, if it's disastrous, you could then say, well, you know, we're really stuck and we should survey people. But I think people who feel strongly about this and city code changes will hear about it, and if they want to weigh in on it, they will. And like crafting a methodologically sound survey that the Planning Commission deliberates on the nature of the questions and then putting it out to people, and then coming up with language and then having a public hearing, it just seems like more steps than is going to be productive. And the, you know, some of us, this is our first meeting of this, some of it's our second or third or fourth. And I think the next meeting should just be open to everyone with public notice and open meetings compliance. And we'll see if people like show up with pitchforks and, and flames, or if they just want to hear about it, and then we can move on. I don't know, I mean, it just seems disproportionate to me, not wanting to cut corners or, or, you know, push something through with the shadows as we can kind of get this moving, like a rolling downhill in the right direction sooner than later.
Ben, I think the, Hank, Hank, or Amy, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the concern is when we, we start, when we issue a public hearing, it is very rare that we get much, if any, public participation. Is that a, is that a fair statement?
Well, but doesn't that just reflect that people trust the elected and appointed commissioners? Or they're just totally indifferent? And then the city runs as well as it does, which is really well. Like, I, I just don't think that, it sounds like we're feeling we have to like overreach to get opinions from people who, if they have opinions, like will share them. Like they're the, the small minority or the, or the substantial minority of people who care about this, like will let us know. You know, we don't have to like pound down their doors.
Maybe compromise between the two is to kind of use the email blast and maybe even, you know, a letter in people's mailboxes to apprise them of the public hearing. I don't know, like in that way, we're kind of cutting out that middle step of doing the survey, but kind of making a bigger effort in, you know, making people aware that this is going to be heard.
Typically, if I might, Mr. Chair, typically when we have a public hearing, they're noticed in the paper. Unfortunately, nobody reads those. But we, that's a requirement. What we could do, depending on what side is that we could actually send a letter to everybody, you know, mail every resident, mail every household. I think that could be accomplished if you don't want to do the survey thing and let them know that there's a meeting and this is how you do it, and this is a Zoom and give them all the information for it. I think that a lot of our elderly residents have trouble with Zoom meetings. And as a result, we don't never, we don't, that we don't typically get a response from the senior community as to how they feel about things. Having said that, if there is a method that the Planning Commission or the Environmental Advisory Committee wants us to use over and above, understanding that I have bare minimum requirements that I legally have to meet for an ordinance change, then that would be, that would be fine. I don't, I don't have any problem with that. But I do have several requirements that I must meet in order to publish for a public hearing.
Well, if you put it on social media and in the Herald and put a sign on the, like the, in front of City Hall that just, with the very basic information, people happen to be walking by, like, I really think that the people who care are going to hear about it and will overcome whatever technological hurdles. Like, the city's still doing city business, even if there's, you know, constraints of gathering in person that are, and, and productive. And like, this shouldn't be any different from that. So if you, if you put something out to people with a simple, non binding survey that is coupled with, here's when you can tell us what you think, or you can put it in writing, the, the people will, if, if they have anything to say. I think we are not representative, like the dozen of us here, because like, we just care way, way more about this stuff than almost anybody else in the city. And if we open it up to everyone, then we'll get some more people and then we'll have some more data to move forward with. Because right now, it's not, it's really so, it's really stuck at this point.
With the understanding that I have legal notice requirements that I have to meet, and none of those things meet the legal notice requirement. So I have to publish it in the newspaper.
And, and everything that would make it compliant. I'm saying that, I'm saying above and beyond that, like, like social media and word of mouth and just putting it out there. And then, you know, if 10 people show up, then those 10 people will get to say what they think. And if 100 people show up, then we'll, you'll get some of their feedback and have something in the nearer term to proceed with.
At this point, I get whatever the pleasure of the Planning Commission is.
So Hank, this, is this a vote? Is this a formal motion, or is this just, we're going to say, do this?
Well, you're going to have to, a motion would be to set for public hearing. If you're going to set for public hearing, I cannot set it for public hearing unless I have language certain, because I have to publish it. So that's why I'm saying, whatever you do, I've got to have direction in that what the ordinance is that I'm going to have to publish in order to get it through, you know, in order to meet my legal notice requirements.
So let's, let's, let's do this. I, and tell me if I'm wrong here, but it seems like we have two options at this point. We either set it for public hearing, like Ben says, and just, just do it and be compliant, or we think a little further about it and we, we send out some type of survey prior to that. So I guess at this point, we would be looking for a motion to just set a public hearing and then vote on that. Is that a fair assessment?
You could do that.
I will do that.
But you need somebody to do that.
Motion to set a public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Motion by Rick, seconded by?
Second.
Jill, okay, okay.
Okay, so we'll go around the room. Gail.
No.
Gordon.
I didn't know it was going to come second, no.
Rick, I'm sorry, you made the motion, correct?
Correct.
Jules.
No.
Chris.
Hi.
Todd.
Todd, you're muted.
No.
Jill.
Hi.
Blake. I am a no. Hank, where does that put us?
It puts you five, four, no.
Okay, so I guess next steps are to pursue a public survey, is that right?
That is, well, that's, if, if somebody makes a motion, somebody would have to make a motion in order to.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we proceed with, with a public survey.
Second.
Okay, Gail.
Hi.
Gordon.
Hi.
Rick.
Hi.
Chris.
Hi.
Todd.
Hi.
Jill.
Hi.
Blake.
Hi.
I am also an I.
And Jules made the motion, so Jules would be a yes.
Yep. Does that satisfy what we need for this item?
So just to be clear, what we're going to do is we're going to bring you back survey questions at the next regular mission, meeting of the Planning Commission for you to take a look at. And at that point, once we're okayed with that, we'll put the survey out and gather the information for the following meeting.
I think that's fair.
Yes.
Yeah, that's everybody's understanding.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Last item on the agenda, it looks like, is a communication of the master plan update.
Yes, we do have some exciting news. And we've gone through receiving the master plans, a request for proposals. We've gone through and we've actually interviewed several people with respect to that. And we have made a selection that we will be recommending to the city commission. But the city commission will have approval over whether or not we hire them. The firm that was selected is MKSK, and what they are is a collaborative of planners. They will be recommended to the city commission after an evaluation process. Brad Strater is principal in charge. Brad's an expert in land use, corridor land use, transportation. And Anne Marie Kirby is a project manager, and she'll work along with Brad in land use and also handles community engagement for the master plan. In addition, their team includes Haley Wolf, who's a landscape architect, Ben Pavelski, who's a planner and transportation planner, as well as Justin Sprague, whose expertise is in economic development and housing strategy. And that'll round out the proposed team. Justin's also an MEDC and RRC redevelopment ready communities is what that means advisor. So he advises these people on that. And we're fortunate to have a firm like that to recommend to the city commission. Additionally, the firm also has local ties, as most of the people in the firm live in close proximity and are familiar with the city of Huntington Woods. The master plan revision will include a run through to establish what has already been accomplished, what's still relevant and what needs updating. It'll focus on three key areas. One is housing diversification, an issue that's been before everybody a lot, and we've talked a lot about in the past. Economic development is another criteria that we'll be focusing on. And a Woodward corridor plan, during which we'll rely in part on the MOD, which is a mobility oriented design study by the RTA, which is a regional transit authority for regional corridors in Wayne, Oakland and Washtenaw counties to promote coordination around strategic development, mobility and transit investments, and encourage collaborative development. This plays very important with our Woodward corridor. One of the corridors analyzed in that study was Woodward between Detroit and Pontiac. The MOD action plan will be used during the master plan process and made available to the Planning Commission. And I've sent the link out for that to the, to all of you. So if you'll check your emails, you do have it. If you don't, please call me, I'm happy to send it again. And again, this will be used during the master plan update to obtain feedback from residents on recommended actions. So the timelines and estimated cost of redevelopment. This is really going to be an exciting time in the city as we look to write our next chapter in our history. I think that this is an opportunity for us to revisit a master plan that was, when it originally came out in 2008, won the Daniel Burnham Award for Best in the State. Won accolades from the Michigan Historic Preservation Network for the installation in our plan of a preservation plan. So what we're hoping to do is to build on that type of plan. And we believe that MKSK, should the city commission decide to concur with the recommendation, be the firm to take us forward into that. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Other than that, we're going to have some work ahead of us.
Awesome.
Thanks, Hank. Let's see, public participation, anything from the public that's here wishes to speak? Yes.
Yeah, I was just writing a note, but it'll be a lot faster for me just to say it. As a member of the EAC and also a longtime resident of Huntington Woods, I really appreciate everyone taking the time to really thoroughly discuss this and express your concerns and also your consideration to even listen to us as another group about trying to bring Huntington Woods maybe into a future that's, um, a future technology that we don't know what it's going to be like, but we know that we want to be able to provide options and alternatives to the people that live here. I'm so grateful that you have spent so much time with us and asked the questions and really gone into the depth of questioning that you have. Because everything that you ask makes us make better ordinances, makes us make it easier and more helpful for the people who live here. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, that's all I have for you this evening.
Okay, well, I'm not off to a good brief meeting start for 2021, but we'll address that in the next one. That's, thank you to the EAC for all the work you guys have been done and for showing up today. Looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, Gail?
Hi.
Rick?
Hi.
Jules?
Hi.
Chris?
Hi.
Todd?
Hi.
Jill?
Hi.
Blake?
Hi.
I also I. See you guys next month.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks, guys.
It's just a two.